This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
There we go. With that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. All members are appearing remotely and we are being recorded. Uh, first item on the agenda is public speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Can raise your zoom hand or turn on your camera. I see none. So we will dive right in. We have some planning board minutes. Everybody have a chance to look at those?
You only see one on the agenda, but I know we were sent a bunch of them that are.
Yeah, there's only one on the agenda. I think we can do those anyways. The other minutes.
Still approve the minutes for January 18th?
Uh, I think the January 18th was the only one I didn't see attached.
That was the one. That's the one we're waiting for. Sorry. Yeah.
So I had a couple of questions. Jeff, did you put these together? They predate you?
They predated me.
All right. It's kind of confusing about who's present and who's not on all of them. Some of them were all checked off and then people were marked absent and some of them. Weren't, we weren't on it all.
I would suggest what we can do, I apologize again. Maybe we can wait one more meeting and I want to get the January 18th one in there and then I will go through them. Myself and review the attendance. I Curtis prepared them and Curtis is no longer. Uh, I mean, he's still, you know, he's at Mass DOT.
He's with us. He's just not with us.
He's not with us. So maybe we could, um, I could repost them at the next meeting or.
Counterpoint, can't we just go through them now? I mean, it's going to be pretty easy to look at who was there and who was not.
I'm happy to do either way.
I mean, they've been sitting there for a couple of meetings. Let's just get them off of the, get them out of there. The public deserves to have our minutes approved.
I'm happy to do that. So, so the first one chronologically is August 17th.
Send my earlier motion, by the way.
So the August 17th one, it has me listed as absent and I wasn't there, but then there's a mark next to Chris and I can't tell.
I was not there. But I was not in attendance for that one.
So that one definitely needs the attendance corrected, but other than that, I think we could. Vote on.
So I motioned to approve the minutes from August 17th, 2021 with the aforementioned amendment of Chris's attendance.
All right. No, I was, I was not in attendance. So that's correct. I think the way it's shown. X's mean in attendance, right?
Yeah, but then I'm listed under a category of absent below the whole table.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
Needs to be a little cleaned up.
And without.
Got it.
Uh, all right. Voting to approve as amended. Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Do I have to abstain because I wasn't there?
Yes.
Abstained.
Ken.
Hi.
Danny.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
And I don't know also abstain.
And I don't know if Ken, uh, Ken was actually a member yet.
Oh yeah, you're right. So can, you gotta abstain too.
Yeah.
All right. Then we come up with, uh, September 21st and I did not have any issues with the attendance on that one.
Yep. Motion to approve the minutes from September 21st, 2021.
Seconded.
All right, uh. Uh, Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Ken.
Hi.
Danny.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
And I am an eye on that one. Uh, next up is October 19th. Where both Chris and I are marked present, but then also listed as absent. And I think I was at this one.
I think I was not. Well, I don't remember.
I can see myself in the minutes. I was at this one. Chris was not. Nope, Chris, you moved to adjourn. We were both present.
Then I was present. So.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 19th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All right, Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Ken.
Hi.
Danny.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
And I am an eye. And then. We've got, uh, we just did October 19th. The last one is December 7th.
Yep.
Which, uh, I think everyone was present for. So that looks. Good to go.
Motion to approve the minutes from December 7th, 2021.
Seconded.
Voting to approve. Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Ken.
Hi.
Danny.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
And I am an eye. And so with that, we will move to the first items on the agenda, which I will be recusing myself from. So I will just turn off my camera and let me know when you're done.
All right. Thank you, Jesse. All right, everyone. We're going to move on to the first item on the agenda as Jesse just noted, which is the continued public hearing for Eric Burson seeking a special permit. Under section 12.7 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance, uh, for Fort Hill. And also for the second item, which is a 2017 amendment to his 2017 special permit. Under section 12.74, uh, Fort Hill under, I think Berkshire Brewing. What is it? Berkshire BBC, whatever that stands for. And what is it? Peter, uh, Attorney Lane?
Hi there. Thanks.
Um, actually, I was asking a quick question. The, the, the second, the second agenda item, I'm not seeing the usual listing I have in my. In my listing is to, um, the name of the company. What is the name of the company on that property?
Uh, I'm so sorry. Birch Family Farm.
Yeah, let me correct that to say not BBC, but rather Birch Family Farm. Yeah, thank you. Okay. And now, um, I'd like to, uh, as was intended, set it to you, Attorney Lane, to update us on what's going on.
Thanks so much. Uh, for this evening, um, I, I'm afraid I have to ask for, uh, further continuance for. Uh, substantive submissions, um. At the end of January 18th hearing, uh, there was. Still a long list of items that need to be attended to. Um, and I can give you a little bit of an update on that. Before I do, um. Let me just explain the, the main reason for this continuance is as, uh. James, we just went through. I have two clients. I have 1776 Brewing and I have Birch Family Farm. And, uh. After consultation with both clients, Birch Family Farm. Who had. The tandem application for. Uses the brewery was making, uh, of their land for, um, parking. Uh, and then, uh. Recreational uses related to the bike tracks. They've decided that, uh, they would rather just streamline this process and step out of it. Um, to that end. They are withdrawing any requests, uh, for recreational uses. And as I indicated in my narrative submitted, uh, last Friday. Uh, they are willing to just level those structures. I know there's been some debate as to whether they are even structures. I know the city's position is that they are unpermitted structures. We've decided to just not engage in that debate. My client is willing to withdraw their application for recreational uses. And as soon as possible, uh, level the mounds, um, given that it's the middle of winter. Uh, we expect it might take some time. We're asking, uh, that we just have until July 1st to have those mounds leveled. Um, in the meantime, obviously, uh, no use, no recreational uses will be made of that land. The, the one, I suppose slightly recreational use, uh, that has never really been a point of contention as clear as I can tell. Uh, is that Mr. Bearsins, uh, while working in the brewery has used a portion of, um. It's his mother who owns Birch Family Farm. Of his mother's property to, um. Corral, uh, his two dogs. That is strictly, uh, for his personal use. It's not intended to be any kind of commercial use. We would hope that there would continue to not be a point of contention on this. Uh, and that, um. While the recreational uses for the bike tracks are withdrawn and those mounds be, um, leveled. They continue to leave the fenced in area for the dogs, uh, closest to the border with the property. Um, further along these lines of Birch Family Farm wishing to just get out of this process. Uh, would, and I think will, this will streamline, ultimately streamline this for the board as well. Uh, Birch Family Farm, uh, is now working on an A and R plan to. Uh, subdivide that eight acres, uh, with the smallest portion possible. Uh, being created, uh, into a new lot that will then be, uh, sold to 1776. So that they can use it for their parking. Um, it's just the gravel area that we've all been looking at. Um, where there are, uh, storage containers, uh, and, uh, parking. Um, as we've gone through this process, it just continues to get more difficult. Every time we talk about new conditions, I have to start talking to my clients and considering rewriting leases. Uh, and the, they've just decided the easiest thing is for Birch Family Farm to subdivide. And sell that small backland lot, um, to 1776. Um, as it indicated in my narrative, uh, we're working with Emily Holmberg. On the AR plan, uh, as well as on the larger plans, um. She thinks she'll be able to have that ready, uh, for submission, March 8th. I just ask also that, uh, we be put on the, uh, the, uh, early part of the calendar, uh, for, um. I guess the next. Meeting, which will be the 15th or whatever the third. Tuesday of the month is going to be this month.
Can we talk about that for just a second, Attorney Lane? Uh, I want to, in a moment, get the temperature of the board on this, uh. But before I do, I just want to ask about the post timeline that you're seeking. Uh, and that is, as you just said, our next meeting on the 15th. And you've indicated that. That's the necessary time to get the A and R and your narrative. I kind of got the sense from what you just sensed that that's the amount of time required to kind of get everything because you also mentioned in there. That even though the leveling of the field would, would take time till later, that things like the lighting plan, I think at the end of your narrative. The sound plan that you've started working with engineers on that. Uh, are, are you intent on having those as part of your, oh, and I should even state too, that you'll need to resubmit, which I think you stated, the plan overall. Because it's now a different lot, you know, different lines that need to be approved. So are you saying that you need to the first, really the 15th to have all of that done?
No, I'm not. Uh, the only thing that will be submitted on the eighth is the A and R. The only thing that, uh, I would possibly appear for on the 15th is just. Hopefully the endorsement of the, the, the A and R. Um. The substantive plans are absolutely going to have to be redone. Um. Again, uh, Emily Holmberg is working with us on that. Uh, she's working on a lighting plan as well. At the moment, she's not because, uh, she's, we've shifted to this A and R focus. So there's no way any of that's going to be ready, uh, by the eighth. We need to see that this A and R is endorsed. We need to close on a sale, uh, and, uh, we really do still need to kind of work. Uh, with both the, uh. Sound engineer, uh, Ms. Holmberg on the lighting plan and the sound designs. Um, these are both. I think with all due respect, uh, exceptional. Uh, items, uh, for submission to the planning board. Um, and we're just, we've got a couple of samples. Uh, but we really are going to have to dig into that a bit more, which I haven't had the time to do, uh, yet. Um, the focus for the past couple of weeks has been on. These A and R plans and the potential sale. Um. So the only thing submitted by the eighth would be the A and R. Uh, I think on the 15th, I would hope to have a better perspective on how much more time we need to finish the sound design and lighting plans. As well as some of these smaller items that, uh, were part of the list from January 18th.
All right. But it's clear it would be probably at least a month from that date.
I, I, I would probably ask for two months. Um, I feel like in the past I've agreed to 30 days and it's just not enough time to get all of this together.
All right. That helps me put perspective on this in the board as well. Um, did you have anything else that you want to add at this point?
Um, just to clarify, yes, we are engaged. Uh, we've been engaged in with, um. Uh, Herb Singleton from, um. Uh, from CSA, um. Which is, uh. Sound design and, um, noise control management, uh, experts. Um, so we're hoping that, um, as I kind of go through the history of this with, with, um, Mr. Singleton. Share with him our, um, our concerns, our goals and the board's concerns, uh, that we can come up with a plan, um. For the outdoor sound. Um, in addition, uh, Emily Holmberg is going to need some time, uh, to. Take a look at the manufacturer specs, uh, on lighting, um, and then come up with a plan for that. Again, hoping especially with the lighting, this will be streamlined once we get through the A and R and the sale, uh, because then we're just talking about. Installing lighting and wiring all within land owned and controlled by 1776.
Okay. And I will add, just because it was in your narrative that, um, the new plan would require, uh, amended stormwater calculations.
Of course. Yes. And Mr. Swanson will then need time to, to, for that.
Okay. So my personal take on this is that. It is in fact cleaner, uh, not to have to deal with them as the same. I, I personally think it's the right move. It delays. Things which I'm not a big fan of. We've gone a long time on this, uh, but I do think it's necessary and I personally am amenable to, uh, approve this way forward. Uh, and, you know. Basically look for a motion to continue and expect an A and R on the 15th and then two months ish following. Uh, get back to the business here, but I'd like to check with the board. I'm going to kind of go through one at a time and see if. If, uh, you have any comments. Harry?
Yeah, I'm just hoping that when we get through the end of this, we get everything that could possibly be done there, listen for all, get everything landed out, everything that could possibly be done. All those wishes or whatever, so we can finally put this thing to bed.
Okay, thank you. Danny?
Yeah, no real major comments. I just think that this approach is kind of more in line with. With, uh, the conditions required for the special permit and I do think it's cleaner, a little bit more streamlined. And that's all. I think it's the right move.
Chris?
Um, yeah, I agree with Danny. I think it's, this is going to make things a lot easier for us to make decisions. Um. Um, I'm, um, my only concern is this, to make sure that the residents still understand that or still are made aware of the continuance and they still are able to show up and, you know, listen to the hearing and. You know, we've been at this now six and a half months. And, and I think it's a good idea to do this. I'm, I'm actually for this, this decision to sell the property and make it a lot cleaner. I just want, when the applicant comes back, I want the application to be complete so that we can really. Look through the whole thing, make some decisions and move forward instead of continuing it again. I, I want to, like as Harry said. Let's get to, you know, making, moving forward.
Yep. All of my clients want the same thing as the board is saying, so.
Okay. And before I go to Ken, just one second. I will, I'm going to layer one comment out. Chris said, because he did say something important there. Right now, we have two public hearings open. We voted in the very beginning to kind of merge them. Um, when we do this A and R switch at our next meeting, we will have to take that step of, um, closing, uh, that public hearing. That was added on. We'll have to make some sort of motion to, to clarify that that's now off and we're just continuing the original. Uh, the, the part one, uh, and, and there's a little bit of a technicality that we're going to have to iron out there. Jeff, I'll probably speak with you on that. Um, all right, Ken, your view?
I just want to make sure that the neighbors, uh, know what. Know what's going on and, um. Just keep them informed, so.
Okay. So it seems like we're all, uh, Jeff, go ahead.
No, you're on mute, so.
Jeff, you're on mute. Yeah, he knows.
Thanks. Um, yeah, just, uh, I, I just on the, the technical part, the, the two things I wanted to say are that. The A and R, just so, because there's, there's people here. I mean, this is more people than we usually get for most meetings. So just be cognizant of that. So the A and R. Does not require a public hearing. Um, it doesn't get notified. There's no notice for that. So.
Okay.
The, the assumption is that that'll come forward. Um, just because it'll, it appears on the agenda. So I think we'll take Mr. Lane on his. Um, you know, and it's where that, that'll be the target for the A and R. Um. But that's just kind of, that's a very, um. It's a very administrative process. And then, as, as members of harvest just kind of said. Um, if you are convening on the 15th. Um, you know, that, that's the call for a butters to attend because at that point you've continued the public hearing to that day. Um. It's following the due process for everyone else. That's what, that's the only thing I'm worried about is, um. I wanted to put a plea in for, for Mr. Lane that on the 15th. Um, we're not expecting the sound design, but we need a definitive date. Um, because if everyone's going to come on the 15th to get an update. You know, we can't just have that be another day where you say, I'm sorry, I didn't get everything I, you know, even to tell us because otherwise we should just. Go to May. Because everyone here can follow that path. Otherwise, everyone has to come on the 15th to follow the next date. So. I just wanted to air that out a little bit and, and I think Mr. Zarvis said that. Maybe the board would entertain with, um, accepting the withdrawal requests for. Birch Family Farm. So that would, that would be an action that the board could take on the 15th, but just making sure that on the 15th. You come with a projected date because that's, that's just the only thing is just following that timeline. That's the thing I'm most concerned about.
Yes, and, uh, I'll be able to have, uh, further conversation with, uh, both of the experts on that. So, um. I'll be here on the 15th. Um, if I need to make a formal request. After the submission of the A and R, I'll, I'll make the formal request for the 15th that, um, Birch Family Farms applications be withdrawn and closed. Uh, but that would be the only legal action I think I'd be taking on that day. Otherwise, I will have an update, um. On, uh, uh, a deadline and a date for the next meeting.
That's great. And I like that because it gives us the action to keep this line item on the agenda for that, which as Jeff said, keeps everyone coming. That works out well. So we'll expect to do that, um. Formal withdrawal of the Birch Family Farm on the, I think it's the 15th is the actual.
Yeah.
And that means that we need drawings in by what date? The 10th or 9th? Yeah, the A and R will be, it's easier to process, you know, um, I would say, yeah. By the 10th.
Okay, great.
Yep. Cause the town hall's closed on Friday. So that, you know, I, I think 10th should be the target.
Okay.
And we'll have the A and R as a separate agenda item.
Right. Okay.
Okay. So, uh, unless there's any further comment for the board, I'd like to just give the opportunity to the public just to, to make any comments about this. Um, and then it'll be following that. We're expecting a simple motion to continue both of these, uh, at this point. Uh, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? You can raise your hand. You can, uh. The, uh, undo your video so I can see your hand like Mr. Hayden did. And I'll need name and address first, please.
Yeah, so I'm John Hayden, 19 Fort Hill Road. And I, I just only wanted to clarify about the, um, leveling of the mound. Uh, do you, I wonder if that would really be removing the, the fill that was trucked in there? The. Concern is the, the soil there is a barimac, uh. Fine sandy loam, which according to USDA is prime farmland. And I'm not sure if spreading fill over the top of it, it would be the, the best thing. But anyway, I just wanted to put that up there.
Any comment on that, Attorney Lane?
No. Sorry, I don't, I don't have a comment. I, I, I. I don't really know that that's something we need to discuss. I don't know what the board's opinion is about that, but.
I think it's a good question.
Mounds will be leveled.
I think it's a good question. It'd be good to come, come to the next meeting with that, with an answer for that.
With an answer for what, Mr.?
Uh, if you, if you're, if the applicant is planning on just spreading it on the existing soil or, or trucking it out.
Chris, I don't know if it's like next meeting or perhaps when they have their whole package pulled together, whenever that is, just. Make sure that's addressed.
Well, that's on the land that they're doing an A and R split for, so it won't even be on. It, it, or at least it might be part on that property. So it's kind of an interesting.
Right. Oh, that's a good point. Because if they're withdrawing next week, next. You know, if we're looking at, uh. Um, discussing a formal withdrawal of that application next week, next, uh, meeting. Then at that point, they're not on the agenda anymore anyway. So how do we discuss that?
It doesn't, anything that's on that side is essentially done. So, so there is a concern, Attorney Lane, that, that, um, some. Fill that is not of the quality of the land soil got deposited there, uh. Honestly, if an A and R comes to us, an A and R is an approval not required. We endorse them. We don't approve them. But there's only one thing we really consider and that one thing is the, uh, access to the road, how much frontage there is. So we don't have much leeway at all.
With, with trucked in soil. Yeah, you're right.
To handle that.
I mean, that's, I, I wondered what your opinion was. I didn't really think this was an item we needed to discuss. Um.
But it's something that, you know, a conscientious person, I think, would, would take a look at. So please, please just ask your client and, you know. What the intent is and that's all there is to it, really.
Um, yeah.
Okay. I don't know that I'm going to have an answer for that by the 15th, but, um, we can certainly, um. Have an answer or a response to that, um. When we have the final public hearing on the full submissions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Can raise your hand. Virtually, I think it's star six or star nine or. Uh, you can, um, unblock your video or just speak now so I can hear that you want to speak. Going once. Going twice. I don't see anyone. So at this point, I think we're looking for a motion to continue both of the public hearings for Fort Hill and Birch Family Farm.
Yep, I moved to continue the public hearings for, uh, Fort Hill Brewery and Birch Family Farms to March 15th.
Hold up, uh, Jeff has his hand raised.
Oh, Jeff. All right. The motion has been made. Um, let's, let's try and do a second before we get to, uh, discussion. We don't have to vote on it. We can have discussion, but we do need a second.
That's my kind of, I'll second the motion.
And now we're in discussion. Jeff?
Thanks. I just wanted to suggest if I could to make this at 6:30. To set the timer. So you have another item that the, the continuation for Starbucks is on the 15th and they're. Um, eager to, 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 to be at the meeting on the 15th. So I think just make the motion for 6:30 and that, that'll queue up. I think we might be done in a half an hour, uh, with that one. Okay. So I'm in my motion to add, uh, 6:30 PM start.
I'll second that.
Requested amendment and second of the requested amendment. So it's on the 15th at 6:30. All right, all in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
And I am an eye. Attorney Lane, uh, that wraps up our Fort Hill component for tonight and should allow us to bring back. Mr. Jesse Belcher Tim, if he is.
Thank you.
Out there.
Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you, Attorney Lane.
All right. I am back. So next up on the agenda is, uh, hearing for Investment Real Estate LLC. Seeking the reappraisal of a site plan under section 12.9 for the construction of a new office building structure and associated site work to explain. Expand an existing self-storage unit located at 9 Coleman Road. Is there someone here to speak to this? Mr. Squire, how are you?
I am here. Yes, thank you. Uh, Jeff Squire, uh, here on behalf of the applicants, um, uh, move-in storage, uh, company located on Coleman Road. Um, uh, for the record, I'm a principal with the Berkshire Zine Group. We were hired, uh, by the company, actually going back, give a little history of the project. Um, back in 2017, 2018, um, when they were looking at, uh, an expansion project. And for various reasons had scaled way back. Um, they had gotten so far as to receive, um. Uh, you know, partially, uh, the number of permits that they needed, uh, for the project and then got delayed for various reasons. And so. Um, the, the project is now resurfaced, um. And is before you tonight. It's, uh, it's a complicated project because it does, uh, does span, uh, two municipal, uh, two municipal. Um, uh, uh, boundaries. And so Jeff, do I have screen sharing ability? I can sort of take you through the, the presentation real quick?
Yes, you do now. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. So just to orient everybody, Route 10 is here across the top of the page, the major, uh, roadway, uh, Big Y facility. Um, and so the Coleman Road Storage, um, move-in storage is this larger property here. Which encompasses roughly nine acres of, of land. What's currently developed, um, where they've got their self-storage facility is in this small corner of the site. But you can see the Southampton, East Hampton municipal boundary bisected property, which just complicates things with regards to all the permits. So. Um, there is, um, you know, we needed a variance in East Hampton, um, for the, through the ZBA because there is no legal frontage in East Hampton. As you can see, it comes down to this. Narrow point here. So there's no frontage, um, for the property technically in East Hampton. So a variance was granted, um, as was previously. Uh, for, uh, an expansion of, of an existing use. Um, site plan approval, I think had been approved for a small office building in this corner. At that time, they had contemplated a larger expansion. Had scaled back because of, um, the costs associated with the conservation commission permitting, uh, specifically. Um, and so we never got fully through the Southampton piece, which involves both conservation and planning board. Um, and so that, that has all been, uh, brought to the surface again in this most recent effort. And so the, um. The project, again, just looking at the current site, um. These, these three images in the top left-hand corner are all essentially from Coleman Road. This is the entrance to the facility now. Um. You can see there's, uh, there's a, uh, a bank with the drive-through facility located on the very corner of Coleman Road and Route 10. This driveway off of Coleman Road enters in through a locked gate, um, into the self-storage facility. The property corner. The property corner that I was referring to is somewhere roughly where my cursor is right now. It all comes to a point, so there is no front of East Hampton. Looking across the field. Again, off of Coleman Road, you can see the self-storage buildings in the back. And the real limiting factor constraint on the site are the wetlands in the, in the rear, which you can really see. You know, and highlighted in, in this image because it's all really the taller, the taller vegetation. Looking at, get the, the existing storage facilities, self-storage facilities. And then the view off of Route ten. It's, it's actually a pretty obscured site, the Verizon is on the corner. There's a number of other structures that really block views into the site from. From Route ten. And so, again, just in plan view, here's that property corner, the entrance to the existing self-storage facility, there's eight, nine buildings there now. Here's the Verizon building and the drive-through and exit back out onto Route ten. The proposal is to construct seven new self-storage buildings. I know there was an office building. Mentioned in the, in the advertisement, it's the, the, the office building is located in this end of the. Of this longer building. These are two larger buildings that are split by a covered aisle essentially, so it's the same concept as they've got now. Just with a covered aisle to avoid the. All the additional fees that are associated with each additional building for the notice of intent, they charge, you know, a thousand dollars plus per building. And so that's what stopped this before, it was, it was, you know, twelve thousand dollars or so worth of permitting fees for. The Conservation Commission in both towns. But they've opted to proceed with it this time, and then there's four identical buildings in the back that would extend their existing facility in, in East Hampton. There's two detention basins to manage the additional previous area and roof water. Small retaining wall, all the existing outfalls and drainage is being retained. We are not encroaching on any of the wetlands and are going through that process concurrently. I don't know as though there's anything else I really have to say about a self-storage facility, so yes, I, with that, I will. Leave it that and answer any questions. That you might have.
So Jeff, the, the storage units are all like the single-story storage units like they have existing there, is that right?
Exactly.
And, and can you give us a little detail, give the public a little detail about the office building portion too, and what that's gonna look like?
Sure, so, oops, I'm sorry. The intent is to simply. Make this end of the, this, this one longer unit here. A six hundred, eight hundred square foot office space that would include a desk, a restroom. A place for, you know, the public to come and, and speak with somebody about renting out one of these spaces. I think there's a couple of windows, but the architecture would blend into, you know, everything else that's being proposed. And the existing storage facilities, and it's not, nothing I don't think that would draw attention to it, other than just giving. Visitors a place to, you know, a physical place to, to go.
And, and that's gonna be one story as well, right?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, okay.
These are all slab on grade.
Yep, okay, planning board questions?
Yeah, what is the dash? Dash line represent in the drawing?
The, I'm sorry, which one? You broke up in the middle of that, the which dash line?
Sorry, just the, the more emboldened dashed line.
This one here.
Looks like, is that just your limit, limit of earthwork?
And, and erosion control, yeah.
Okay, and then was, so I, I understand the premise for adding the covered walkways and kind of clustering. Your units there on the southern part of the page. Is there a reason why you didn't wanna do that for the four units to the east? Wouldn't that, wouldn't you wanna follow that same principle for those units as well, or was there a reason to space those out and not include the covering for those?
Yeah, it's a good question, and I can't, you know, as a, as a, you know, as, as not being the business owner, I can't really answer that question other than. You know, we did have that discussion, and I know the notion was to at least mimic what they've got in this portion of the property with those units. And be able to offer a different type of storage, you know, opportunity or marketing, you know, for, for these units was have a covered. You know, access path, so I know, you know, that, that's all I can speak to.
That's, that's fair. And then I, my other question was. Now we're getting a little bit closer to Coleman Road with the structures, is there? I see some nice retention ponds and some earthwork proposed, is there any? Plantings or vegetative buffers proposed along that edge of that retention pond or Coleman Road, maybe to provide. Just a little bit more natural screening for the new proposed buildings?
Yeah, so great, that, that's, I'm glad you, then it triggered another thought too, to mention that. Yes, one of the things that I should highlight is there are a couple of additional street trees that are shown along Coleman Road. You know, we recognize that there's a buffer requirement, screening requirement from residential properties with the East Hampton bylaws. It's kind of weird the way this works with the, with the municipal boundary, but in, in, you know, recognition of that. You know, that bylaw and that intent, we've, we have offered to provide a few additional street trees. Along that side to fill in what's, what's there. So, you know, on this plane, you can see there's a couple of additional trees here, this is all gonna be, you know, grass very much like it is, I know the grading. Contours appear like a lot, it's really only one or two feet of elevation change. So it's really not that much. And. What else was it gonna be? Oh, signage, there's no intent to change any of the signage, there's one sign out there now that, that will remain. And lighting isn't, there is no additional site lighting beyond, yes, the security lighting that they have now, so just something to be. You know, cognizant, cognizant of for, you know, from the standpoint of neighbors and the butters, so I just wanted to point those out.
Great. Few more questions, are any of those parking spaces designated handicapped?
There would be one that would be required to be handicapped accessible, yes. So we would need to designate that, yeah.
Okay, and I, I do understand the nature of, of a business like this is not a very consistent. Coming and going, it's not like a typical. You know, business offering services, like a restaurant or something like that, so I do understand that it's a very odd pattern of coming and going. But is there any kind of expectation or quantification of any increased traffic that might be associated with expansion of? Of the, you know, the capacity for storage here? Has that been considered at all?
I don't, you know, at least based on, again, my understanding of the business and, and what they're, you know, looking at from. You know, an operation standpoint is that the, the, the majority of their business is online. This is, you know, an office space that. A provides a, a place, you know, physical destination, as I mentioned, for somebody, a, a potential customer to come, you know. Knock on the door and speak with somebody, but you know, that's not expected to be, you know, a big generator. It's really this, this person would also serve as sort of maintenance and oversight of the, of the property and, you know, help take care of things, and so. It's, it's an office space that serves both, you know, as a, as a, as a sales office, but also a maintenance office.
So, so de minimis, essentially.
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate that the location of an office here is gonna drastically increase the number of traffic. Or customers they have there.
And do you know where those catch basins go to? Is that what those are, in the middle of the existing, those, yeah, where your cursor's, and then there's one further.
Most of them outlet here.
Okay. Into the wetland, essentially.
The wetlands, right, and so we're. So there's a number, there's one, two, three outlets there now. As well as, you know, something further down, you know, in this, in this location. We're not proposing to, to modify or touch any of those, we're, we're gonna treat and pick up any of the new stormwater and run. As much as we can through, you know, the required treatment chambers and, and all the treatment that we, that we can, we're actually bringing everything this way. And, and, you know, treating all of that water in compliance with the stormwater standards that hadn't been treated before. And so, yeah, we're, we're trying not to monkey with, with those outlets.
Yeah, those just like, like separator units or, or, you know, vortex or something along those lines, or is that what you're using, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, I mean, so most of, most of this treatment is all through grass swales and a stone weir.
Okay, so it's, it's saddling and, and natural vegetative filtering?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid, avoid the need for new, new outlet discharge, pipe outlet discharges.
Yeah, I, I like that. Okay, thank you very much, that's all the questions I have.
Any other planning board questions, Ken, yeah?
Could you just, with the cursor, show me where the chain, the chain link fence is going to be?
Absolutely.
Is it going all around the complex?
So it, right, so there's, right now, this is where the existing, if you can see my cursor, this is where the existing entrance gate is. So none of this chain link fence is gonna change, which runs around the outside of the perimeter. It will extend, you know, just like it does here, it'll bridge the gap between these buildings.
Yep.
Run, run around the outside. Connect these two along the top of this retaining wall here, and then across into this building.
Okay.
And then there'll be, there's, I'm sorry, there'll be another service gate at this location.
That's what I was gonna ask, there's two service gates, so will this be like a twenty-four hour? Can folks go in and use the storage twenty-four hours?
That's a good question, I would presume with the code you could, I don't, I don't honestly know that answer, but I would presume. Okay, so when I know most of the others, yeah, you could.
Cuz I was thinking that the lighting, like, will the lights always be on, or if someone comes in at. Like two o'clock in the morning, would there be a, like a sensor and a light would go on or something like that? That was my only.
Sure.
Kind of question.
Yeah, and, and it very well may, I, I may be misspoken, there may be hours of operation, general operation. That they're allowed access, that visitors are allowed access into the facility. It wouldn't, you know, I could, I could look that up real quick right now and, and probably find out, but I would imagine they may have hours of operation that. You know, the gates don't operate beyond, you know, ten P M to, you know, five A M or something.
Cuz I've seen storage facilities like this where they actually had someone living on the complex, but you, you're not doing that. There's, there's gonna be no, okay.
No.
That's all I have.
Any other planning board questions? I just had a couple. So there, there's no. The only sort of like public utilities that this is gonna add, Jeff, is just like the bathroom that's gonna go into the. Office and some minor lighting. Is that right?
Yeah.
And. Just snow removal plan, you talk through that?
Uh, well, then, I mean, they're, they're bounded by, bounded by a chain link fence, and so it's gonna be very, you know, they're obviously gonna be limited in terms of. Where they can push snow, you know, without, without losing the fence. So, you know, certainly some of these, these areas along the outside perimeter, just as they do now, will hold. You know, a limited amount, a limited amount of snow, I think all of these aisles are, you know, they're twenty-three feet wide. And so, you know, to maintain during the bigger storms, to, to lose, you know, six feet, eight feet. And still have a vehicle access in there is still, you know, is still feasible, so. And I think just was, as with any other site in New England, you know, these, these, you know, giant snowstorms are just gonna have to truck it offsite if they. You know, need to provide access to all the buildings.
Okay, and Jeff, where was the? Where are you with the Conservation Commission? Are you done with them in East Hampton yet or not?
No, we're still going through, yes, we're still, we've, we've actually continued, we continued the last hearing, we've gotta go back to them. I think in another week or so.
So part of what you're doing here, and Jeff, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, but this includes a stormwater permit component from us, is that right?
We, it's a good question, you know, and for me, for Jeff Squire to confirm, but my read on this would be that the Conservation Commission would probably take that. Stormwater permit, have you applied for the stormwater permit through the Concom too?
Yes, so that was, that's the other permit through the East Hampton Conservation Commission that we're chasing, yeah, there's, there's a lot of.
And so, and, and those are often assigned to both us and Concom, and our practice is generally to defer to them, since they're the ones that deal with this stuff more than we do. So I think any approval we'd probably condition on them getting a successful Concom, a stormwater permit approved by Concom. I think that's just the way to handle, rather than make you come back afterwards.
Sure, no, that's fine, and I think that's what our expect, expectation was, is that they would approve that, that stormwater plan. As part of their, their purview.
Okay.
I just have one, Jesse, can I ask a question on that, just. Jeff Squire, I think you, did you have one hearing with the Concom already? Have they seen this plan? Like, do you have some level of comfort that they? Understand what you're doing, because we, the, the one thing that we do like to try to avoid is. If the planning board were to approve it tonight, and the Concom makes a significant change, and you have to kind of come back to the planning board, have you been to them once?
So I, we've done a site visit, we have talked to them, we haven't formally opened the hearing because there was some discussion about the wetland delineation. And so that's what I'm trying to, you know. Parse through at the moment, honestly, is, is, you know, the delineation is fairly clear, there's still flags out in the field. They, they were questioning whether we needed to have it redelineated, given that it was, you know, more than three years ago. You know, I think the, the challenge that I've tried to express is that, you know, where nobody is delineating wetlands now, and so that's gonna put a. Three to four month hold on, you know, permitting efforts with them by the time, you know. They, they, they delineate it, we get our survey out there to pick those up, add those to the plan, and it, it, you know, so anyway. That's what I'm trying to work through with them. Stormwater wise, I don't think we have any issues.
Yeah, so Jeff, so Jeff Squire, then the, I guess the flip side of you, of us doing like a conditional approval on this tonight that says condition on the stormwater. Being approved by them is just that if there are significant changes to the plans, then you'd have to come back to us anyway. To modify, but I think you're still better off going that way in the hopes that you don't have changes instead of just waiting and assuming you will.
Right, understood, and I think, I think there's ways, ways to deal with any, you know, potential changes or comments that we get from, from the Conservation Commission.
Great, any other planning board or planning department comments or questions, Harry?
Yeah, I'm just curious, how you regularly was being put in these things?
That's a, that's a good question, and not one that I wanna answer. Yeah, as, as a, you know, civil engineer, site designer, I don't really know how they do that, there's some, there's obviously some contractual. Language that any, any renter has to, has to sign and theoretically adhere to, and it would be the responsibility of the. You know, the property owner to, to ensure that. Everybody's complying with that, but I don't, yeah, beyond that.
I have a question.
Yeah, Chris.
Just one bit of clarification on lighting, so I looked up the facility, and it's open Monday through Sunday, six A M to ten P M, so it, there are. Hours where it's nighttime. Where people are accessing it, can I get clarification when you said there's no new lights? But, or is there, or the same kind of lights on the new buildings that there are in the existing ones?
Exactly, it would be the same kind as, as what's on the existing buildings, they're largely just security lights, maybe motion detected, but. I think, you know, given the hours of operation of the facility, you know, they obviously wouldn't operate. You know, outside of those hours.
Okay, so, but it's definitely, the, the, the lighting is safe for, for, for the public, so they don't have any, it's not an unsafe situation.
No, 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 everything, everything's, everything's, you know, well enough lit that the public can find them themselves.
And, and Chris, it does say in the narrative that they're motion detectors.
Okay.
It looks like there's language about that, so at least for sort of Ken's concern. If it's late at night and dark, I think it'll only be when the cars are coming through.
Yep, which makes sense. Thank you.
Any other planning board or department questions? All right, questions or comments from the public, you can raise your zoom hands, turn on your camera. Wave your real hand. Or just unmute and ask, and I see nothing. All right, any areas of concern, discussion by board members, are we? James?
Hesitancy a little bit was the discussion that Jeff brought up, and I think you brought up too about the Concom. And about the possibility that there might still be changes. You know, I think we could make a motion right now. You know, but if they do change it, it's a bit problematic, and I wonder if it may be of value to extend, I just, I toss that.
So that, so I, that was sort of what I was saying with Jeff Squire before, or is trying to get to is, you know, the benefit of this is. If you don't have any changes, you don't have to come back. But the downside is, if you do have changes, you have to come back, but I do think it, there's a chance, there's no changes, none are done after tonight. But I do think it, there's a chance, there's no changes, then they're done after tonight. I, I, I would be happy, as long as we're conditioning this on, you know, if there's any changes to the plan, they need to come back, and also that it's conditioned on a, uh, approval of a stormwater permit by the Concom. Then I think, it sounds like that's certainly in our best interest, and it, it's most likely in Jeff Squire's best interests unless something goes sideways.
So the condition covers it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, I just had still a tiny bit of hesitancy about that, sorry. Um, so I'm ready to make a motion if you like.
Sure.
I motion to approve the site plan for Investment Real Estate LLC, seeking reapproval under section twelve point nine for construction of a new office with the aforementioned condition laid out by Jesse. I'll second that.
Alright, voting to approve. Harry?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
And I am an I. Best of luck the rest of the way, Jeff Squire.
Thank you very much. Good seeing you all.
You too. Alright, and I believe Jeff Bag, is that it for tonight?
Yes, that thus concludes. I think, um, I would just put a plug in for a reminder that, um, the planning board and ordinance are meeting next Wednesday, um, March eighth, um, to continue the discussion of the forty R district. And then the board meets again on March fifteenth, um, to deal, um, with Starbucks. So I did wait, I, I did wait, but I did get a resubmission. I think I waited from Starbucks, so I will send that out tomorrow. And, um, that, it, it, they did make a change, deciding to accommodate the playing board's request from last time. So that'll be on the fifteenth, along with whatever, you know, movements on the Fort Hill project are for that.
Excellent. Alright, with that.
Motion to adjourn.
What we do adjourn, Harry?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
And I am an I. Excellent meeting as always, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Yep, see you next week.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.